Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call the joint meeting of the Rockport Board of Selectmen and Rockport Board of Health meeting to order for June 2, 2020. I'd like to begin the meeting on a very positive note.
Join the meeting.
I think we can all use some positive news, considering everything that's going on. June Sullivan, longtime resident, turned 100 years old yesterday. June has been a Rockport resident since the early 1960s, served on the Memorial Day Parade, marched in the parade up until her 90th birthday, and then rode in cars in the parade from those years on. But has been a terrific person, valued member of this community. So I know, I'd like to, on the behalf of the town of Rockport, wish her a very happy birthday. So congratulations to June Sullivan, 100 years old. That's quite an accomplishment.
Absolutely.
Definitely. Happy birthday.
Let's go on to meeting schedules. What is this, Mitch? Meeting schedules?
Sure. So Mr. Chair, following the suggestion of Dr. Wedmore at the last meeting, I would concur with his sentiment that the boards could go to one joint meeting a week. So the opportunity for the boards to determine what day works best and what time.
What are people thinking? What works for people?
I think it's prudent.
No, no, I mean days. Let's go to once a week, Tuesday, Thursday.
Join the meeting.
Tuesdays seem to work, have always worked really well for selectman meetings. I don't know. The Board of Health. I mean, I think, honestly, what I think might work best is Tuesdays, but 6 o'clock.
Yeah.
It's better for people who work, but I, you know, open to other suggestions, obviously.
I'm gonna have, I'm back at Saugus, so I'm gonna have to do, the earliest I could probably do is 5 or 6, so.
My question is whether the Board of Selectmen want to continue with their Tuesday meeting and then just join in or have a representative at the Board of Health weekly Thursday meeting?
Which is me.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think in some cases, so that there's the amount of flexibility for both sides, I'd suggest that they still stay joint for the time being. That way, in case you, the boards want to take action, both are one, we could structure the agenda so that only items could be done at the end, so everybody wouldn't have to stay.
Okay.
So Sid, I don't know that Tuesday works for Sadie, and quite clearly 4 doesn't, and perhaps Ron. And I think 4 is too early for some of the Board of Health members.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we were suggesting Tuesdays at 6, if that could work.
Sid, do you know whether Sadie and Ron can make 6 on Tuesday?
I don't know. Now, we used to have a meeting, actually, we used to have our meetings on Tuesdays at 6. I think they, they can do that, but somehow it got pushed to Thursday, and then things got shambles. So I think 6 o'clock on Tuesdays will work. We could try that for next week. And if not, then we could see about changing things to maybe an hour later.
Perfect.
Sure.
So moving forward, moving forward, Tuesday, the Board of Selectmen will meet at 6:00 PM. And.
In joint session with the Board of Health.
Perfect. Exactly. So we'll do 6. Great. Thank you. Approval of minutes, selectman minutes that were emailed to us, does any, is there a motion to approve minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written for Tuesday, May 19 meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion or changes or anything along those lines? Hearing none. Roll call, vote. Selectman Wilkinson.
Aye.
Selectman Campbell.
Aye.
Selectman George.
Aye.
Selectman Donnelly.
Aye.
And Selectman Murphy votes aye. Thank you very much. Also, there were Board of Health minutes emailed. Is there a motion to approve?
I don't think we have a quorum for the.
Yeah, we don't have a quorum. So let's hold that till next week.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, COVID-19 test. Barb McCarthy.
Hi, yes, really nothing new to report at this meeting, maybe something more next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along on letter F, considerations of current or additional restrictions related to COVID-19. Anyone have anything that they'd like to bring up, suggestions in terms of limitations, things of that nature? Selectman Wilkinson.
I had something, yeah, so I, this came up at the end of last meeting, but several residents have reached out saying that the state is now allowing, like, certain fields. I actually just, at the beginning of the meeting, emailed, I think the email thread included Board of Selectmen and Board of Health. It's just a screenshot of, I found in the state guidelines where it is tucked. And I can read, I can read it if none of my glasses on, but I think I can read it. So several residents have reached out about opening, even if the school complex is, continues to be closed. People are interested in having the Long Beach, which are public court, is a public court, and the Story Street kind of courts opened. I don't know if you want me to read the, read the regulation now, or we can discuss and then read it. It doesn't.
You want to summarize it?
Yeah, just says athletic fields and athletic courts can be utilized only for non-contact sports with equipment such as tennis and pickleball. No permits should be issued for groups. Users should not engage in pickup games, organized games, or tournaments. And then it's like users should sanitize hands, when you should avoid touching others' equipment. Waiting, should wait outside the court, just basically sanitizing and waiting, basically. And for just, you know, just private use.
What are people thought, what are people's thoughts regarding this?
I think it's time to open things up.
Yeah. So essentially, if the park or the area where the tennis court is, is open, then the courts can be open too. I agree.
Okay.
And certainly, if people are waiting for courts, they need to stand outside of the fence or properly distance and make sure they are consistent with all the face covering and social distancing guidelines that we have in place. But I think, you know, independent parks with courts can open.
Okay.
But not basketball, because basketball is certainly considered a contact sport.
Yeah, it appears as though the parks are, that, kind of everything but contact sports in the playgrounds. It appears as though playgrounds are still closed, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
So, excuse me, so there's three tennis courts in town, right?
Yes, there's the high school in Long Beach and, and Pigeon Cove.
Okay, so Bruce, did you just say that it's private tennis courts that are open or public tennis courts?
The courts that are in public parks, the issue with the high school is that the high school is not open. And I think Rob was quite clear, would be difficult to control and monitor on the courts at the high school. So we're talking about courts that are independently in parks, not connected to the high school.
Okay, so there are no courts like that in town, right?
No courts like what?
That are privately owned. All courts are affiliated with some sort of park, which is closed, so are we saying?
No, no, the parks are open, Mary Beth. It's just the school that's not open. It's only the courts that are at the school. If the school's not open, then the court shouldn't open. But if the courts are in a park.
The parks are still closed, Dr. Cohen.
Well, it looks like the guidance from the state that I guess Sarah consented use says that parks can reopen.
Right, we just, we have to vote to open them.
Oh, I got it.
Right, this, yeah. So I think it's kind of two issues. So I think that we would have to vote to open the parks for non-contact sports, but continuing to keep the playgrounds closed, right, Mitch? Do I have that right?
Yes.
And then the other issue is, which I guess is a conversation for the school committee, which they have a meeting tomorrow night, is I think if, if they're gonna continue to keep the school complex closed, they're gonna have to find some way to, to kind of, you know, close it off or lock the courts or do something.
And do we consider Long Beach, is that private?
No. Public.
That's public, so the Long Beach tennis courts would be open, the Pigeon Cove tennis courts would be open, and then we would have to wait for the school committee to open the high school tennis courts?
Correct.
Wouldn't we have jurisdiction over, over the tennis courts at the high school? The Board of Health and the Board of Selectmen?
No, the, the school department under Chapter 71 controls all school property.
Okay. Even under a state of emergency?
Yes.
Okay. Dr. Dr. Wedmore?
Close them, but reopening is really more their thing.
I got it, got it. Dr. Wedmore?
Yeah, I think it makes sense to open the tennis courts at the Pigeon Cove School and at Long Beach. But I think we also ought to be pushing the school department to open the tennis courts on school property. It's one thing to have the school closed, it's another thing to have acres of school property sitting idle when there's people who could be out quite safely participating in tennis on those courts.
Yep, got it.
Yeah, I think we could talk, I don't, I haven't seen Rob yet on this meeting, but I think it was more, also more of a staffing issue. Several of his staff are furloughed. So, but I think, obviously, and I'm, I'll be at the school committee meeting tomorrow night, so I can bring that up to them as well. I can, I can share the sentiments of these boards that I think, you know, if we're trying to get people exercise and reopening, non-contact, non-playground things are being encouraged.
And we're being safe.
Great.
Yep, absolutely.
Good.
Can I ask about baseball? Is baseball considered a contact sport?
Yes.
It is, okay.
So in Phase 2, practice will be available on fields for adult recreation and, and Little League, but not, not games.
Okay, good.
So we need a mo, well, you need a motion for that.
Right. Is there a motion regarding opening the tennis courts? Two out of the three publicly owned tennis courts.
I'll make a motion.
Selectman George.
I make a motion that we open the Long Beach public tennis courts and the Pigeon Cove public courts as of tomorrow.
Second.
We should, I think, Ruth, if we could add in, I think we should adjust to open Pingree Park to non-contact sports and keep the playground closed.
Okay.
Right, just so that people can, people can walk, you know, they can do non-contact things at Pingree Park.
Okay.
Okay. You want to adjust that?
Yep, so I make a motion that we open two of the public tennis courts, the one on Long Beach and the one in Pigeon Cove. And we also open Pingree Park field area, but not the playground.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. And any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, vote. Dr. Wedmore?
Yes.
Dr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy?
Yes.
Selectman Wilkinson?
Yes.
Selectman Donnelly? She's muted. Selectman Campbell?
Aye.
Selectman George?
Aye.
Selectman Donnelly?
Aye.
And Selectman Murphy, both aye, and the motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Anything else regarding restrictions or loosening, loosening up restrictions? Okay, hearing none. Let's go to letter G, long-term care regarding living facilities updates.
I'll do one first.
Selectman George?
I've contacted the senior living over at O'Farmin, and they're doing well. Their one client out of four who did tested, test positive has now converted and is negative.
Wonderful.
So everyone is negative there. I also talked to Dawn at Pigeon Cove Ledges and Rockport High School Apartments, and they are both doing very well. They have no positives or no people who are in quarantine. And I have a call out to Milbrook, but I haven't heard from anything from them, and they're pretty good about updating me every Tuesday and Thursday. So all is going well on that front.
Good. That's wonderful to hear. Anyone else regarding long-term, long care, living situations?
Chassy, do you have anything?
Sure. Well, Mitch, do you want to say anything about our call, or do you want me to?
You can go ahead.
Okay, so today we had a conference call with Denmark. Ron and Mitch were on the call along with DPH, the epidemiologist assigned to the long-term care facility, as well as the Bureau of Healthcare Quality and Safety. And it was a good call, not, nothing new, you know, emerged from the call today. We kind of reviewed where they're at with cumulative positive residents and staff. We kind of talked a little bit about what can be done in the future if there is another wave, what they're doing to prevent transmission. There is some new guidance from the state on visitation policies for long-term care facilities, and they are thinking about starting to allow family members to come and visit outside the facility, any residents who are no longer testing positive. And most of their, most of the folks that had tested positive are now being moved out of isolation, which is good news. And they are monitoring about 11 residents currently. So things have really stabilized there. I thought it was a good, good call to have at this time. Moving forward, we're all on the same page. That was good.
Okay. Selectman George?
So Chassy, are they retesting people to make sure they're negative or just during the 14-day quarantine?
That's right. They are not retesting. They're using a symptom-based, time-based strategy to move people out of isolation.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, let's move on. Letter G is the reopening advisory group update. Selectman Wilkinson?
Sure, so the reopening advisory group continues to meet, we're meeting about twice a week. We have posted a few, a few documents. The document, the reopening document for businesses is on the website, and I think has been used by a lot of businesses. We continue to update it. So as new guidelines come out, every few days, those are posted as well, so it's kind of a working resource. On Friday, or I think it was Friday or Saturday morning, we put out a "No Before You Go" document that was emailed out and I believe posted to the website, but more, and that is kind of a, that will be updated on Fridays as well. And that's kind of a what the current status is of things in town. We saw several other communities utilize these types of documents, so that at least you capture their tourists or visitors who, you know, happen to see their email, happen to be on an email list, or go to the website to see, they'll, they'll see that the, you know, the hours of the restrooms and what the situations are. We've also put out a document, I think I mentioned this at our last meeting, about, which is kind of tips and advice for business owners about answering kind of questions from customers if, about, you know, someone walks into your shop and asks if you have any COVID-positive employees. Barb can, can talk more about that. She created the document, which is super helpful. And then this week, we've kind of shifted to working. We're kind of looking forward towards. You know, and restroom. So today, we reached out to restaurants and asked them if they are interested. Once outdoor seating is an option, the restaurants that currently don't offer any outdoor seating, we've asked them if they're interested in having any. And if they are, then we're gonna kind of look at some safe, creative solutions to hopefully getting them a few outdoor tables each. We've kind of thought of a few solutions. And at this point, we've reached out to all the restaurants, and we're gonna see what the, what the interest is. And so far, we've had restaurants that are like, yes, I'm definitely interested. And we've had restaurants that say that they don't think they're interested. So we'll kind of move forward on a case-by-case basis once we know. And then we're also looking forward, working on ways to help the retail stores and looking to, towards an alternative to present to the Board of Selectmen instead of the outdoor displays that we've, the permits we've done in the past, looking towards a uniform, some type of outdoor display. We're not, we're early in the stages of this, but that would be consistent across the board or consistent in different, different areas of ways to help the retail stores, something that they could put outside. And that would be whether or not they have public areas outside or private. So lots going on, and I will, you know, continue to report. Barb can, can chime in as well, obviously.
Barb, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I know that works. We, we also kind of all agreed on the call this morning that other than a random here and there, that mask use overall was fairly good. And that the distribution of masks by the fire department folks that were helping out has really helped. And so there was no sort of glaring hole in that program, which we all were pleasantly surprised about. There were a couple of concerns about trash, trash containers, and we were gonna take that offline and, and see what to do about that, thinking that maybe it'll go away as the restaurants begin to open up. And we're gonna look at doing one more of those one-page sort of how to deal with customers. The first one, as Sarah said, was, you know, what if, how would you know you had a positive employee? And what would you do if you did? Our second one is, what if someone refuses to wear a mask? How do you handle that of face covering? So we're working on a, sort of working that up as well. And if there are other key questions that business owners need that sort of frontline, what do I say? How do I communicate this? Then we'd be interested in creating those as well. So if anyone hears of anything, please forward it to us, and we'll put it on our to-do list of developing a document for them, sort of a Q and A.
Great. Selectman Donnelly?
Yeah, I heard, I read today that there's pending legislation that would allow restaurants and restaurants that are now allowed to serve beer and wine with takeout orders, that they'll now be allowed to serve cocktails with takeout orders. And I'm just wondering, in the reopening committee, and maybe you address this, I forgive, forgive me if you have, Sarah, whether in those outdoor seating arrangements, restaurants that currently have liquor licenses would be able to allow patrons to sit there and drink?
Yeah, so we're.
Excuse me for a second. This was addressed in the DPH call that, that I was on previously to this call. I'd like to just tell you what they had to say.
Yeah, please, please do.
That would be helpful. This specific issue came up, and on the call, it was clear that the licensing authority for the community has broad discretion to consider expanding alcohol licenses to include outdoor areas. And the local boards of health have broad authority to expand service to outdoor areas as well. So the guidance from the state is use your authority and judgment, and you're able to do that.
So if we, if we could, you know, sort of cordon off an area, I just know that for the restaurants that do serve alcohol, that's a lot of where they get their margin. So go ahead, Sarah.
Yeah, so that was, that was our thinking, but, and that would be restaurant-specific. For example, that space outdoors would be adjacent, you know, to the restaurant. We're not talking about public, we're, we're also talking about expanding just outdoor places with picnic tables and that type of thing for takeout. But yeah, so then it would come back to the appropriate, you know, Board of Selectmen, Board of Health for, to adjust the license to area, which is exactly, so, so our information matches perfectly with, with Dr. Cohen's from the DPH.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I think Dr. Wedmore has his hand up.
Dr. Wedmore?
Yeah, the opening committee and outdoor seating has that discussed in the potential universe of having downtown Dock Square and Main Street as a pedestrian-only area during parts of the days and weekends, because that certainly would allow more social distancing, allow more outside activities and eating. And we, we do close down traffic periodically for different occasions. It's not necessarily a new concept, but it, it ought to be certainly considered in the idea of expanding outdoor seating.
Yes, so the police chief, the police chief is gonna look, we're gonna look into, but it's a bigger picture discussion about some potential pedestrian changes to bare skin neck. But that's kind of a longer-term, bigger-picture change that isn't for the reopening group. Unfortunately, one thing we've learned with the, with the festivals that we close down is once we close a major area, it'd be, a bottleneck is created downtown, and we can't, because our commercial area, I use the term "commercial," you know, loosely, for example, Upper Main Street is, we have, we have retail restaurants and housing all together. And you can't really restrict people from get, legally restrict people from getting to their homes. Mitch, you can correct me if I'm wrong. And in the past, we've learned, when we've, when we've closed off certain areas, it's just created bottlenecks that are more of a headache. And then the police chief has made it really clear that we can't, we can't make, like, you can't loosen the alcohol laws so that, like, Upper Main Street can be open container. That's more of a festival-type thing in a certain area. I mean, I think we're open to looking at all different ideas, but at this point, it seems like the most interest is just, you know, specific restaurants increasing their licensed areas and, and seating for, for waited tables.
Okay. Selectman Campbell?
I would agree with Dr. Wedmore, and I think, and I, with Sarah as well. And I think that this is something that perhaps is not a COVID-related item, but it should be something that we should look at in conjunction with perhaps the Chamber of Commerce to doing this. Newbury Port has done it for years and does it quite successfully all the time. And I think to engage people, and once things are safe and we can get people back and have those, you know, those big events where we draw lots of people in, I think that's a great idea, to block things off downtown, not to impede, you know, police activity or, or safety or anything like that, but something that would enhance the business community and maybe draw more people in. So I love the idea.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dr. Wedmore?
Yeah, I'm just a little bit confused, though, the difference between an occasional festival downtown and having it, you know, on frequent, good weekends, like Losta does, when they used to have the cruise ships come in. It's simply a matter of expanding the envelope, if you will, that we all talk about.
Okay, well, I'm sure you, the reopening advisory committee will have some recommendations for the Board of Selectmen, and we can act on them when we receive them. Any other comments regarding this? Okay, hearing none, let's move on. Mitch, do you have anything for the TA report and the incident command updates?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This weekend went well downtown, as indicated. We had police and firefighters downtown. We'll be doing that again this weekend. On a Saturday, Sunday, we'll have, in addition to targeted police presence, we'll have firefighters downtown walking around with masks. A large amount was given last weekend. I anticipate, as the crowds continue to, to grow, we'll be doing more of the same. So really, on the education front, that continues to go very well downtown with the additional, additional presence with our public safety folks.
Excellent.
On a, switching gears on a non-COVID-related piece, general town administrator update, I would put on everyone's radar Monday, the 8th, at 1:00 PM as a finance committee meeting. And. And we just got off a call with the Senate Ways and Means, and we're awaiting some additional information from the state, planning to share a good sized update with the finance committee, so it might be good for all to be available to listen in to that particular piece.
Mitch, the time again, 1 o'clock, did you show?
1 o'clock.
Okay.
1 o'clock. So I'm going to put something out to the department heads after this meeting finished up at 3:45. So I haven't had a chance to do that yet. So I'd say just mark your calendars for those who are available. It'd certainly be helpful.
You'll send us an invitation so that we can jump on?
I'll put something out.
Perfect. Thank you.
And as far as the, I had a sit down with the director and the assistant director today. All bins are out. We're doing multiple pickups. The issues that they're that they've come across is for the takeout, some of the businesses are using these cardboard crates with the food.
I've seen that, yeah.
And that's causing an issue with the barrels. It's prematurely filling the barrels up. And we need double barrels in some areas. So what they're going to do is, in addition to what's already out there, in a few targeted areas, wherever it can fit without being awkward, they're going to also place a gallon drum so that there'll be an additional overflow to to address that, so that we can stay on top of it. But DPW has been present limit, you know, this is technically the start of the season, so it's working out kinks, but overall, that's other solution. So if you see in some cases, three barrels next to each other, that's why it's helpful are as those cardboard items are for handling the food, they're difficult with the way the barrels are set up. So we're working to address that. And all went well, by the way, with the bathrooms. We continue to do while there are no, no issues. Those are open. And
Right. That's wonderful.
Issues.
Good. Anything else, Mitch?
That's it.
Excellent. All right. Any questions from Mitch from either board? Okay, hearing none, let's move on. Health agents, updates and health nurse updates from the Board of Health. Do we have anything there?
Leslie? No. Okay. Cassie? No. John, any? No. Oh, hang on. John, any other?
I was going to say, there's nothing more than what I reported to you yesterday.
Okay, great. Thank you, John. Mary Beth? You gotta unmute yourself.
Yep, unmute.
Oh, sorry. Could I ask, we got an email today about antibody testing that Teresa sent out. Is she on this call?
She's not on right now.
Okay, Cassie or Barb, do you guys have any information about the antibody testing? Did I read that right? And that they're going to provide different types of antibody testing? And do we, has the parameters changed as to who can get that testing? And if they still need the the regular, you know, antigen testing with that?
Kathy, you want to kick that? Well, I can just speak to the change in the guidance. So before, when we were receiving serologic results on individuals with no, no PCR test results, we were just telling them all they needed to go get a PCR test. Now that's changed. So when we start to investigate a positive serology with no PCR test, we are asking the individual if they've had symptoms consistent with COVID-19 in the last 14 days. If the answer is no, if they're talking about maybe symptoms they had four weeks ago or never had symptoms, we are not instituting isolation, we're not doing contact tracing, and we're not looking for people to put in quarantine. We're considering they must have had disease earlier in the pandemic or closing out that case. If the person has had symptoms in the last 14 days, we are recommending the PCR test and we are putting them under isolation and looking for contacts to quarantine. So that's a, it's a big change, but it makes sense with what we were, what we were seeing. So that's a change in how we are dealing with the serologic results. As far as I am aware, we are still only recommending testing for people who are symptomatic or have had known contact with with the case, but it's not recommended for just kind of everybody or anybody to go get tested.
Okay, so the specific question I had is, a friend had a sort of a travel history, lost their sense of smell, this is way back in the beginning, didn't have access to a test, and is now wondering, out of a curiosity, should I have this antibody testing done? And so the answer to that is still no.
Excuse me.
Yes, that's right. Given the current recommendation, we wouldn't recommend the person have the test done. If a doctor wants to do a test, that could be done. But if the person tests has a positive serology test, they may get a call from a public health nurse. They will get a call from a public health nurse. And if there's any, you know, inkling of symptoms in the last 14 days, even if they're somewhat mild, if they're consistent with COVID-19, like a cough, or maybe like a low grade temp, we would recommend that they get a PCR and they would be put in isolation. So I guess if you you go for the serology test and you have any type of symptoms, there's a chance you could be placed under isolation. So
I see. Okay.
Okay. And Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mary Beth, this is Barb. And we are having selected physicians order that it is part of the test dictionary. So there are patients who have had the antibody test done just for the case that you're talking about. The problem is, it's hard to interpret still. So because it's IgG and it's really not all that specific. So we're getting there on testing, but it's it's not the panacea everybody thinks it is.
Right, right. The other question I had for health agents is just with all of these protests we've been seeing in the news, does the Board of Health or did the state come out with any specific recommendations for people who are in a large crowd like that? Like, are they recommending that, you know, let's say you went to the protest for in Boston for an hour and you're in a tight crowd? Is the is the Board of Health recommending that people quarantine themselves after that?
Cassie? John?
No.
Hang on, John, you're muted.
All right. So the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency is sending out situation reports daily now regarding the demonstrations that are occurring across the across the state. In fact, in order to to assemble, a permit is necessary to be issued locally. And we just got a release today listing all of the scheduled demonstrations across the state. The effects of of monitoring them is such that it's for deployment of of resources. The Department of Public Health is certainly going to attempt through contact tracing at the state and local levels to determine what, if any, transmission is occurring. But of course, that's going to be after the fact. In terms of recommendations, quarantines, no, I have not, I've not seen that. And and recommendations of how to conduct oneself to reduce the risk of transmission, that has not changed. And I have not seen any specific direction for anyone attending these these events. The standard recommendations for being in the public is, is this is the same until it changes, that the same regardless of what activity an individual is involved in. It remains to be seen what is going to happen if someone tests positive and the person doing the contact tracing finds out this person has been to one of these events. What then? Well, that, as I said, that remains to be seen. So it behooves people to to maintain common sense measures. And I say this reflecting on yesterday, driving at that, the Rotary in Gloucester just before the bridge exiting town. And I saw a demonstration of a couple of dozen people holding signs and chanting and such. And some of them had were masked, but many were not. And this is certainly a concern.
I'll leave it there. I think John's report is very accurate. Just a couple observations to add. DPH has recognized that the rallies, some of the activities at the rallies might not be totally consistent if people want to be shoulder to shoulder rather than distance at six feet intervals. So the recommendation is, in communities, rallies happen to probably a week and a half or three weeks from now, to make sure you're actively monitoring, because that's when we would be likely to see any change in acquired infections. Today, I was in Gloucester at the rally, and I would say virtually everyone was wearing a face covering. And many people tried to keep social distancing as well. So again, it depends really on the location. And we just need to be careful, I think, over the next several weeks and really keep track of what we begin to see.
I just, I wonder if it would be worse, Mitch, when you do your code red, to just sort of put out there to remind people that if you are going to any event, either whether it's inside or outside, that, you know, the Board of Health and the Board of Selectmen strongly suggest face masks and social distancing as much as possible and self-monitoring for two weeks after you attend one of these events. Just to sort of let people know that this is still a risk. And just because you're, you know, at a rally doesn't mean the virus isn't there. And I just, I'm worried for what we're going to see in two weeks.
I'll see a way to
Yeah.
To phrase that. I get your, I get your intent, though.
Good. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none. Let's move on to our last agenda item, and that is public comment. We asked that if you'd like to address either board or both boards, that Mitch will call on you, that you state your name and address and state your comment.
Go ahead, Mitch. Please use the, thank you, Mr. Chair, please use the hand raise function or raise your hand on the video. And Tom Mekus, unmute, please.
Go ahead, Tom.
Hi, I have two administrative items.
Address, please.
73 Marmion Way. The one question, is the reopening advisory group subject to the open meeting law?
No, it was appointed to me.
What's your second question?
The second is a comment, I believe. The Board of Health had a quorum from the beginning of the meeting, three out of five, and they now have four.
I guess we can vote on the minutes now. We only initially had two, Tom, because Mary Beth was offline.
Okay, we can do it. Thank you for pointing that out. And we will, we'll do the minutes after public comment. Go ahead, Mitch.
Crystal, you're unmuted. Full name and address, please.
Crystal Avial, 64 Bear Skin Neck. I guess first, I just want to say thanks. I know, I'm sure all these meetings that you guys are having are starting to interfere with your real life. So we appreciate all that you guys are doing. I think I, I had a statement, and I think maybe a question for Sarah and Mitch. First, I think that the reopening committee, considering creative ways to help out the other businesses like restaurants and shops is really great. We're all for that. I think one of the questions we have being on Bear Skin Neck is, as we look forward to opening, when Governor Baker gives us the go ahead, our, our ability to kind of run the law is dependent upon our guests being able to get to us and get to the parking spaces here. So while we absolutely want to support some of the creative ways, I think we're just double checking that any sort of, you know, maybe closures or blockage would still allow either residents of the area or, you know, for our situation, our guests to physically get to the parking spots that they paid for.
Yes, 100%. The first, the actually, the chief's comment was for its, was that ideas could be for the reopening group, but then ever anything major would have to go in front of traffic and parking and be a much bigger, but that we would never impede people getting to places where they live, places where they're staying, deliveries to places. It was more encouraging, the more short term look for the neck was perhaps thinking of ways to encourage people that if you don't have to drive down there, maybe leave it open for people to walk. And but but by no means not allowing people to get to businesses or get to where they're staying. So no, no worries on that.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. And it took, I'm sure we're all in a tough situation. So that just made me feel a little bit better. We appreciate it.
Like, like, there's absolutely nothing to worry about there.
Thank you, guys.
Next.
Okay. Any other public comments? Please use the hand raise function or please raise your hand. Katie, okay. Just need to unmute yourself and full name and address, please.
Hi, Kate Cahill, Three Mount Pleasant Street. The public restrooms, are they consistently open or is it still hit or miss? Because today they were closed.
Yeah, they were doing some work in there. They are generally set to be reopened. The custodians have fully switched to their
Generally, or it's very disconcerting to see people go down there and they're trying the door and then they look panicked and
Yep, it's where they're, they're open with the exception of work that may need to be done in inside them. They're officially open for the season.
Okay. And the, the trash situation over the weekend, at least in my area, was much better. They picked up on Sunday morning before 7:00 AM. So that was, that was very nice. No, no seagulls were getting heart disease this weekend. Also, just a thought, there are picnic tables up at the school complex that could be possibly temporarily repurposed for downtown without having to buy new ones if you wanted to think about putting in different locations. Just a thought, temporary repurposing. Thank you.
Great. That's a good suggestion, Katie. Next, Mitch. Oh, wait, Dr. Wedmore, go ahead.
Yeah, just one thing on the restrooms. When they are being worked on, hopefully not both of them are being worked on at the same time, Back Beach and T-Walk. So could the, a sign be put up at one or the other directing people who are unawares of the other location, where they can go in a hurry if they need to while it's being worked on?
Yep, absolutely. Good point. And they would not be together, be one of the, I'll pass that along to DPW. Good point. Okay, next, please. Anybody else for public comment? I don't see any phone calls in. I don't see any other public comment, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Anything from either board?
I have one.
Yes.
I just got an email asking when and if the the ramp will be put in at Old Garden
Yeah, so that's a, that's on DPW's start of season list.
But that's going to happen.
Yep.
Okay.
No reason it wouldn't. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, hearing, anything else?
So I moved that the Board of Health approve the minutes from our last meeting.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Dr. Newman?
Aye.
Dr. Wedmore?
Yes.
Dr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy?
Yes.
And the motion passes 4-0. Thank you. Okay, hearing none, thank you, everyone, for all your hard, oh, Dr. Dr. Wedmore?
Just one other thing. I think there's the, a rumor released that the Board of Health meeting next would be Thursday of this week. In view of the fact we've changed to every other week, we will not be having that Thursday meeting, but we'll be Tuesday next, just to clarify a vagary.
Perfect. Everyone understands that, I'm sure. Correct? Okay.
Is that meeting at 4:00?
No.
Sorry, Tuesday?
So, 6:00.
6:00, thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for all your hard work. Thank you for the residents that tuned in to this meeting. I appreciate everyone's efforts. We all appreciate everyone's efforts and we're going to get through this, so thank you.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Moved in second and roll call vote. Dr. Wedmore?
Yes.
Dr. Cohen?
Yes.
Dr. Newman?
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy?
Yes.
Selectman Wilkinson?
Aye.
Selectman Donnelly?
Aye.
Selectman Campbell?
Aye.
Selectman George?
Aye.
And Selectman Murphy votes aye and the motion passes. Thank you, everyone.